I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Parking and Rec Commission will introduce ourselves. I'm Steve Bespuda, co-chairman.
Matt Shaw.
Dan Zapadka.
Bill Nicoletti.
Allison Coria.
Jack Pritchard.
Chuck Stackball.
Dan Lynch.
All right, uh, is there any public dialogue?
A gentleman here, Steve.
Okay.
Come up to the podium here. Name, address.
All right.
And then, uh.
We're good? You can hear me? Yeah. Uh, my name is Alex Marathas. I live at eight forty-five Robert Tread Extension. Uh, several years ago, I contacted the mayor about Wright's Pond, and I put up some posters at Ferguson's. Had ten people volunteer. This is before COVID. Talked to the mayor, said if we remove the snow over Wright's Pond, can we get the fire department come out, spreading some new water? You guys were talking about that earlier. Uh, he said if you get me ten people, we'll consider doing it. And that was before COVID. Haven't brought up with the mayor since. We really didn't have cold weather. Given we're having this little cold spell, we may have one next year. Who knows what's gonna happen? My suggestion is we make that like a public skating rink when we can. Uh, we had the parking there at the, at the cornfields. Uh, maybe we can get the fire department out, the volunteer fire department, to show what they do. Uh, maybe we can get some, raise some money for the fire department doing that as well. Uh, make it a Friday night lights. I'm sure there's a lot of people who will come out, put their cars out there for lights. Maybe get a DJ free, a food truck, and make a community event on, on the weekends. So I don't think it would cost a lot of money, just require a little planning. Um, I don't think it'll happen this year. There's a lot of people that have gone out in the, I've gone out on the ice. I've climbed a lot of snow myself. I'm not a skater, but I talked to a lot of people. And a lot of the young kids were really into it, into the idea, and a lot of the parents were into it as well. We got three, four churches in the area, so I think it'd be a big community event. And I don't know how it gets done, but I was told to come here first. I'm gonna approach the, uh, council in mid-February, see what happens. So, short of a petition.
After I met with you the other day, you came in the office, I thought about it.
Yeah.
Over at Wright's Pond's a little, it's a little tough. It's not a lot of parking, the traffic over there. Did you ever think about possibly proposing it down at Old Tavern Park with the pond there?
Maybe that's.
There's a lot, there's a lot more parking there.
Maybe that's a better way. It's a bigger park. I don't know. I don't know.
It's a lot more organized. It's off the road.
Maybe it's a better place to do it.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
I thought about it.
I mean, I'm making the suggestion here. If you think it's a better place to do it there, then do it there, but I think that.
Because there's more parking.
There you go.
The, uh, driveway is lighted.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, Milford's always in the paper for everything they do, and I don't see us in the paper for too much that we do, so maybe this is an opportunity to.
Oh, no, it's.
To raise money, you know? Community event, so.
Yeah.
It's my suggestion. That's why I'm here. I'm gonna talk to the, uh, council in mid-February. Do you guys have any suggestions? I think, Dan, you know how to get ahold of me?
Mm-hmm.
Glad to support it, whatever you guys wanna do, so.
Yeah, no, that's.
All right.
I will let, um, Ann over at the First Selectmen's Office that you, you might be coming by for public dialogue, just to give them a heads up.
All right, great.
And then we'll go from there.
Great.
Might not be, like you said, not this year, but it's something to look forward to for, uh, next year possibly.
Cool.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, any other public dialogue? All right.
Uh, hi, my name is this one.
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, my name is Deshaun. I'm here to speak in support of the indoor badminton club. There's a petition currently going.
All right, uh, that's a agenda.
They just wanted to talk about it, Steve.
Oh, sure.
Couple people are gonna talk.
Oh, all right, all right. All right.
Okay, I'm, I'm just here to stand in support, because when I was in, um, middle school in Orange, I really enjoyed playing badminton at the school, and I enjoyed playing it a lot when I was younger. And I know a lot of kids at the middle school, and I think at the high school too, really do enjoy playing badminton, but it's very, it's very hard to play outside, and you need a specialized area for it.
Yep.
When it's windy, it's very difficult to play. Um.
Yeah, all right. Anybody else?
Anybody else wanna speak on behalf of the, um, proposed badminton program?
Somebody has to.
Lot of people here to support it. Nope, not yet. It's just, um, if anybody else wanted to talk.
No?
No?
All right.
Okay.
All right. All right, we'll go for the approval of the minutes.
Uh, there was no December meeting, so it's the minutes from November.
Yeah. Can I have a motion? Second? All right, any additions, deletions, or corrections? All right, we'll just go over it quickly. All right, uh, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. Uh. Old business, business. Dan, questions?
Um, there was nothing really, uh, at the November meeting, but I will go through all of my stuff, uh, during the director's report.
All right. Uh, new program approval of badminton. Mandy, you can come up?
Yep.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody.
Mandy, just your name and address, and then you can, you can give your.
My name is Mandy Chang. I live in, um, like, who address? Four zero. Four zero two Pine Tree Drive, Orange, Orange resident, okay? Long time. So I will go through the presentation here, all right? So, um, it is really for, um, an appeal for the Orange Town to offer sessions of supervised badminton play for teenagers aged twelve to eighteen in a town, uh, gymnasium. So I do have a personal story to share. I mean, just like, um, Deshaun, he just shared, you know, his experience. I might also have teenager, um, who really enjoyed playing badminton in Amity High School last year as a club sport. Unfortunately, this year, the club is discontinued because none of the staff were able to supervise a six PM sessions. Why is it over six PM? Because, you know, the gymnasium in the high school is occupied by other, you know, varsity and junior varsity sports. So badminton got pushed to six PM, and then they end up, they couldn't find, um, a supervisor. So there were like twenty, thirty students who really enjoyed it last year, and this year they couldn't play. And, uh, there are many teenagers in Orange Town, they really enjoy playing badminton. Later on, you will see, um, the signatures and petition, you will see the numbers as well. So badminton is a really, you know, a low-impact sport with a minimum risk of injury. It, um, it is easy to play, you know, students, um, students with very various skill level. Very low, they have fun. Very high, they can be competitive. So everybody get to enjoy. You see those teenagers? We just come back from playing badminton in New Haven. I will talk more about that later on. Um, so they are, they're here to support, because they are all from Amity High School, and, uh, one from middle school. So, um, we are asking for, um, teenagers aged between twelve to eighteen years old to have a, like a try per week uh, for two-hour session in an Orange gymnasium. All right, so that's what we ask, and we are hoping that maybe you, if you can even start by offering this program for three months, and then see how it goes, and potentially grow it to a year-round offering. Um, so we hope that eventually, maybe you can even, you know, hire a coach. It becomes a, you know, maybe one-day free open play, and then a one-day training for each week. Um, I researched on the neighboring towns. In Trumbull, Milford, Woodbridge, they all have sponsored badminton clubs or open play at a regular time weekly to residents sixteen, um, and, and up. Um, they utilize a local school gymnasium. After visiting two of the clubs, I found them to be really welcoming. Um, however, most participants, they are at a advanced skilled adults. Um, the Milford one, I feel like they were Olympics players. They were really high level. Um, you know, it's difficult for beginner or intermediate skilled teenagers to join in those club. The Woodbridge one, they may be a little bit more appropriate. Um, and for Trumbull, it is, um, uh, I have not visited there, but, um, I, but they are only open to, um, Trumbull residents. As for New Haven, that's where we just come from today. The Dixwell Community House, AKA Q House, they have a very clear procedure on their website to allow any organization to reserve a space for free. So that's how I could reserve the space for a few weeks, um, so that my teenagers can play. However, uh, because of the high demand, it cannot keep going, you know? I already have trouble reserving for after February nineteenth. So that, you know, that cannot last forever, and I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, why not Orange? All right, you know, we have all these teenagers, we are traveling to New Haven, because they just wanna play. You know, there's Milford, there's Woodbridge, and Trumbull. Can we have that, provide that space for our teenagers? It's so cold, there's really not much to do if they're not in, um, really competitive school sports. There's not much choices. And they just have fun. Ask them, do you guys have fun? Yeah? I mean, they are coming here at night. You know, they could have stayed at home, play video game, but they decided to come. They were more playing today, but these are the field that they decided to come to support. Um, you know, there's studies suggest that participation in sports, you know, for example, badminton promotes what? Physical fitness, social interaction, mental health, academic achievement. You know, we need, Orange teenagers, we need this. It's time that we really hope the board, you know, you guys can really consider the program. Um, when you keep, um, to the next page, it's really the petition result. We got a total of sixty-nine signatures. Three are from the other towns, you know, we took that away. We have sixty-six signatures from Orange residents uh, from five, fifty-three Orange households, because some of them are multiple people signing within the same household. So I want to kind of, you know, put that together so that you see. Um, and then the next page is some of the comments from our residents. You can see all the details in the last two pages, their name, address, and their comment, but some of them, I just wanna read it here. That's what they say. The more opportunities our town provides for our children, the brighter our town's future will be. My daughter really enjoys badminton and would be interested in teen sessions for sure. She's enjoyed playing it in gym class in the middle school, and asked about an offering at a high school. She is disappointed that it's no longer that opportunity. Organize badminton through the town parks and rest sounds like a great idea. My son would absolutely use this benefit if it is offered. Would be valuable for those students unable to participate in the physically demanding high school sports. We do have a lot of those students. And all students deserve an outlet from the demands from school. More activities for kids, the better. Get kids moving. It will help with mental and physical health down the road. So, um, that's the end of my presentation. I really hope that you, uh, you all will vote in favor of my request.
All right, uh, Dan, what's, uh, availability?
Um, I've, we, we've talked to Mandy, uh, prior to this. Um, it was, I looked at the sched, we're gonna have to look at the schedule for the whole bill. The, the gym that we have, which isn't very big, but, um, our High Plains Community Center, she's seen it. Our High Plains Community Center Gym is used by our department and community services with activities during the day.
Yeah.
Uh, and in the evening. So, what I explained to her at first was, when I looked at the schedule, Mondays was our, our best day in the afternoon. Um, like at three-thirty. Right? It was like either an hour or two-hour slot. We would, I would have to look at it more distinctly with our department and community services. Uh, but Monday would be the best day, um, to start out. Um, if we could go down the road and give them multiple day, or a second day, we can do that. But again, we're gonna have to look at the schedule and try to find something consistent for you. Uh, my question for you, Mandy, is, um, will the high school at some point down the road in the future ever bring it back for the kids?
That's the hope.
At the school, okay.
That's the hope, yeah. But, but Orange can always have our space.
So this could be a temporary, yeah, okay, this could possibly be a temporary thing for you.
Yeah, because the elementary schools were not, you know, we don't control those.
How about Maryelle Tracy? I have heard there were, there was a badminton.
Maryelle, Maryelle would go through the Orange, Orange Board Event.
Yeah.
Orange Board.
I mean, I can even, even tomorrow, Mandy, I can even contact them. I know they have an adult badminton program.
A long time ago. I don't think it's.
They still have it, but there's not a lot of people left.
Because I want to join. I didn't know. I mean, how can we don't know?
That, um, that is a group that's been around for a long time.
Maybe advanced.
I know they don't, um, they don't have a lot of people there, but I'm sure you can inquire about it.
Right, so are they open for more people?
That I don't know. I, I don't have anything to do with it. I just know they rent out the, uh, the school, Maryelle. On certain days. It's like a couple times a week, I think.
We don't schedule that.
Maryelle Tracy's through the Orange Board Event. If you ever wanted to go through the middle school, that's through the Amity Board Event. But I will, I mean, I'll, I'll contact them tomorrow as well. I will, I'm gonna have to go through this, Mandy, before, I mean, the, the, uh, commission will discuss this tonight, uh, and we'll go over it. But I'm gonna have to go over the scheduling, and I can discuss with the middle school and with, um, Maryelle Tracy to see if there's possible.
Yeah.
Area there as well. Now, in terms of that equipment, now you said you would bring your own, um, nets?
We, you know, we are having three nets for now, so I don't know how Orange Park and Rec could support, because initially I thought if it is in Maryelle Tracy, the school, they should have.
They should have them. I mean, we, we don't have them. I mean, if you bring them, I mean, we obviously can store them on the stage or whatever, but, um, we don't have the badminton nets.
Okay.
At, at the community center, we don't.
You know, I don't know how that works, but even when you create a program, if people are paying.
Sure, sure.
Then, you know, of course.
Down the road, you can get some more equipment.
But I do have three at home, so that I'm happy to.
How, uh, big a court do you require?
Right, so, um, you know, right now at Amity, how many courts could they set up?
No, no, the size.
Yeah, how many courts in that?
How many gyms and then how big is your court?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you know the dimensions?
Because right now, we set up three nets, but it's really the friends and neighbor, but when you do open a program, then may, there will be more.
Those gy, those gyms are a lot bigger though.
Yeah.
Our, our High Plains gym is small.
Yeah, the dimensions of the.
You know the size of an actual badminton court? Do you know the size of it?
Well, someone can just Google it, the size of a badminton court. You know, I.
Three in the high school gym?
If you're, in the high school gym, you did three? High Plains, you're lucky to get two.
We were in Q House, it was a full basketball court, right? We was, we were able to set up three.
We don't have a, a full basketball court.
Don't have a full basketball.
The gym in the High Plains is small.
Yeah.
High, yeah, maybe.
You've seen, you've seen the gym, correct?
I have saw it. I've seen it.
Okay. I, I was just wondering the dimensions.
It might be tight, you could probably get two in High Plains.
Maybe two or three, you know, you try squeezing.
Oh, you, then you can get two, probably.
You get two. You get two.
Yeah, in High Plains.
So two, you're talking about eight people can play, so maybe ten, they can kind of rotate a little bit?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that will work.
At least it start with something. Of course, we want to, to grow.
Looking at about ten, how many participants you think you would have, Mandy? If you had like an hour slot or a two-hour slot, how many kids are you looking at that you would wanna have sign up?
You know, these kids are signing up, and then, you know, those people who petition, many of them also wanna sign up. So I see a, a big number. I would say at least ten, but it should be more than ten.
Okay.
So you have? Yeah. Yeah, it would work.
Yes, you, you start with that and.
Do you have to have?
Start with that and you go from there. And they would register through our department. You, you understand that, okay? So we would, we would have to figure out a, a kind of a fee and all that to, to go through that as well. But you'll work with me with that.
Oh, yeah, I would happy to work with you. Okay.
Do, they, do they require lines?
What lines would you use? Cause the court has all different lines on it for basketball and stuff.
They have badminton lines?
I don't know.
On those, on that court, there's not. I know that.
Well, you know, I guess right now it's open play. I mean, we don't have a, you know, but eventually.
If you have to set up cones or something, or whatever, based on your dimensions.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, they are.
We can't put any tape or anything on the floor, so.
No.
Just in terms of that.
I guess we start with what we have, and.
Yeah.
The, the hope is to potentially to, to grow, right? And what timeline are you looking to? When can it get started?
Um, I would say for maybe for the spring, March, April, somewhere around there, based on when I get the schedule set, or earlier if possible. But I just gotta get everything worked out with the schedule. We have to set up registration dates, and then, um, go from there.
Yeah, hopefully, I mean, push it for end of February.
Another question that I'm thinking of now is.
Because it's cold, they need somewhere to go.
Insurance-wise, do you have, does club have insurance? Would the school give you insurance for this?
That's why I'm asking if the, if the Park and Rec can run the program, because, you know, we, we don't have an organization. If needed, I can ask, because the Milford Club, I, I spoke to the, the guy who, who ran the club, he's an individual. He, he said he purchased insurance and, you know, but they are all adults, and it's a little bit different. So that's why I'm hoping that if Park and Rec run the program, then that's under you guys.
Now, supervision-wise, now who's gonna, cause we don't have anybody on staff that could do that, but would you have, would you be supervising this to, to get it off the ground, or? And then go from there and try to find someone to do it down the road?
There are many parents, you know, we can take turn, I mean, you know?
There's gonna, definitely need to be supervision in the gym.
Or it could be a behavioral contract if we don't know the kid. I mean, these kids, I know, oh, they, they all behave, they help each other.
Sure.
You know, new kids, if we need behavioral contract, we need the parent to come, you know, we can, you know, we can make it work.
Yeah, shop around.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there more parents in the group with the children that help out?
Yeah.
That could like rotate potentially with helping support?
You guys raise hands, there are a lot of, they're my parents here. Parents here, yeah.
Just cause that way it's not on all, not all on you?
Yeah, because, you know, sometimes I may not be free all the time, but I'm happy to help, but, yeah, we will be helping each other.
More parents involved, the better.
Definitely, yeah. Mm-hmm.
All right, we'll, uh, talk about it, and Dan has to, because our schedule is full over there.
Yep. The commission will discuss it at the end of the meeting, and then I'll be in touch with you, uh, tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Thank you for everybody.
Mandy, thank you for coming.
Thanks. All right. Browns, I have nothing to talk about.
Just snow.
Snow. Snow and ice.
That's it.
And I see, see, uh, people skating when I came here tonight, and it's cold too.
It's great to see Wright's Pond get used so much, yeah.
So we don't check that, right?
No, no, it's just the insurance that now has said that you have to just put up, um, skate at your own risk with signs.
And they have a.
And they don't like the idea of staff going out there on their, on foot with a, a machine or equipment, or shovels, and God forbid something ever happened. Um, it's basically skate at your own risk.
Yeah.
The ice, there's people skating. I mean, even the rink is, is skateable, the i, uh, the ice rink. It's just, it's had a couple issues with some, some damage, some boulders getting thrown on top of the ice and rocks and things like that. Chris had to actually throw the hose on there the last couple days, yesterday and the day before.
He fixed it up.
Glaze on top to fix it up as much as you can.
Yeah.
It's hard. It's a hard, there's a lot of leaves on the bottom that are all frozen. You see that too, but it's.
We had a lot of wind.
Lot of wind, too, so.
And they caught.
It's been used a lot more than it was last year, cause it's so cold.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens. It's hit or miss.
Yeah.
It's hit or miss.
Yep. All right, uh, budget, any questions? Dan, when you present the budget?
It's gonna be the first Friday in February, I believe.
Okay, so coming up?
Um, yeah, I will give you a report at the end of our, at our February meeting.
All right.
Whatever Fri, that Friday is, that first Friday. Is it the seventh? It's February seventh.
All right. Dan, your director's report?
I'm up, okay. All right, well, Happy New Year, everyone. We haven't been here since, um, before Thanksgiving, believe it or not. A lot has obviously happened with everybody here, so. Get you up to date on everything. Obviously, we had that new program approval, um, tonight. Again, you guys will discuss that at the end. It's just basically scheduling, registration-wise, seeing how many, what numbers they have, supervision, so on and so forth. That's really, that's all that's gonna be. I think down in the long run, I think it's gonna end up being back at the high school at some point as a club. And I can discuss that with the high school as well too, but this might be more of a temporary fix for them.
Yeah.
And, um, that's what we're here for. We're here to help them. If they, they think they're gonna have the numbers and they're gonna have interest, we'll give it a whirl. But again, our, that gym over there is used for everything. So I did try to explain to her about our scheduling issues over there between our department and community services, but we'll do the best we can, and I'll work it out with it.
Town meetings too.
Oh, yeah, a lot of stuff, so. Um, she's just like, oh, February and three months, and, I mean, our programs are either six to eight weeks. I mean, we do registry, we're on, you know? We got, we got it pretty organized how we do each season with programming, so.
Yeah.
They're just gonna have to understand that.
They practice.
We'll give them a start. We'll give them a whirl. You guys discuss what you want at the end.
Yeah.
But, um, we'll try to, we'll try to make it work for them, um, to, to start. Um, again, we talked about the rinks and the, um, ponds in town. That gentleman that talked during public dialogue, he did come to see me a couple days ago. He, I guess he did approach Jimmy Zoli about that prior to COVID. That's a while ago.
Yeah.
Um, I did, I talked about it with Lynn in the office after he had left, and she, she actually suggested to, um, maybe, uh, Old Tavern Park, the pond there might be better, just cause of.
Yeah, the.
Ruin, parking, and all that. So he's gonna go to the, uh, Board of Selectmen meeting next month. We'll see where it goes from there, and it might be something for next year.
Yeah. Is that pond deep enough? Has it been dredged recently?
It, that hasn't been dredged in.
Old Tavern?
Yeah.
Probably twenty years ago.
I, um. Yeah.
They cleaned it up.
But years ago, they used to have a fishing derby there.
Yeah, they did.
When we were kids, Jack. You know?
People do skate on it.
Yeah.
The only thing with that is it might not freeze over as quickly as Wright Pond, as Wright's Pond. It flows pretty well.
You're gonna get that flow coming in, yeah.
I'm amazed.
We'll just have to look at it.
Yeah.
That's a, it's a good idea, but again, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Over at Wright's Pond, it's tough. Traffic over there, there's no parking. You would have to block off that road if you wanted to do that, you know what I'm saying? If you wanna have a kind of an event like that.
Yeah, and to go into the cornfield.
Yeah.
There's all boulders and stuff in the field, so you can't park there because people will get flat tires, you know?
You come here first, but that would, I mean, you're gonna shut down roads and have an event like that. The Board of Selectmen have to approve all that as well.
Oh, yeah.
I explained all that to him. We'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Well, we'll try to help him out as well.
It's a good idea.
Yep. So again, uh, with this cold weather, the, the ponds are, are open, and the ice rink is available as well. We'll see how long it lasts. Um, there is an aquatics report attached. I won't read through the whole thing, uh, but it's there if you wanna, um, look through it. Um, program report is here as well. Our youth basketball league is heading into its, uh, fourth week of games this coming week. Uh, season so far is going well. All three sites are being used. Uh, I had High Plains and Maryelle Tracy in the middle school. Our men's basketball league started up at the beginning of January. We have four teams in the league. Ski Bums Program is heading into its fourth week of skiing this coming Friday. Uh, Sue and her staff are doing a good job with that as well. Haven't had any issues thus far. That ends on February seventh, weather pending, but again, already, um, three weeks down, you're heading into the fourth week, and then after this Friday, it's two weeks left. And, um, in terms of that, all the other programming is going well. We did have an issue at the pool, uh, the last couple days with the heat, but that has been resolved. There's some piping issues underneath High Plains there. The, uh, workers were there yesterday and today. They're gonna be there for the next few days, but the heat is taken care of at the pool.
The heater for the pool, or the heater?
For the pool and the heat at the pool.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, it's all set. There was a swim meet there last night with Amity, and, um, it's, it's back to, uh, where it should be, but there's still work to be done underneath the, uh, underneath the ground there. I feel bad for those guys that are under there doing that work. It's brutal.
Is it a big job?
Um, I would say so. Piping underneath, underneath, uh, the ground there, it needs to be taken. Stuff was just old and rotted, needed to be, uh, replaced.
Well, the pool was built in seventy-four, so.
It's coming in from underneath High Plains into, into the pool area, so.
Oh, in the basement?
Yeah, so.
In the tunnel down there?
Tunnel down there, heading into the, underneath the pool lobby into the pool.
Yeah.
So, it'll be taken care of, and, uh, the heating issue is, is resolved.
And there's a leak in the roof?
Uh, yeah, that's another thing.
Well, condensation.
Been reported to the maintenance department and public work, so they're, they're on the job with that as well.
All right, you know, all the programs are running good? You've reported?
Swim lessons, programming, all doing well. The fitness room's still going strong. Membership is good. Memberships at the pool are good.
What SWAC stands for? W?
Woodbridge Aquatic Club.
Okay, all right. Their pool is closed, correct?
Yeah.
Permanently, right?
From what I hear. From what I hear. Unless the town wants to put a lot of money into getting those cleaned up and fixed up. I don't know if they're, that's ever gonna open back up.
Alright, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Alright, uh. We'll, uh, talk about the badm- badminton. Somebody wanna start?
Don't see why there's any reason that we don't do it.
Don't see there's any reason why we don't do it. It's, uh, you know, just scheduling is the big thing. You can't just jump in here and have it, you know, just happens just next week.
Scheduling is gonna be the hardest thing.
Do we need to make a motion to approve it or something, or?
Yeah, you know, yeah, yeah.
Oh, at the end?
After discussion, yeah.
Well, no, we have to.
Make a motion to discuss, right?
Yeah, to discuss.
Strike that then.
You, right?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion. I guess a motion to approve the badminton based on availability and Dan's, Dan's research. I think that's it.
Alright, second.
As long as we have time, um, available, I don't see why we wouldn't grant it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be good for the town, absolutely. And the kids are here, you know, motivated. That's, that's a good sign. That's worthy of support, I think so.
No, I agree. I agree.
Do you have to have it a program or can it be, uh, open gym time specifically for badminton?
I would put it under as a program, cause we do, I, I mean, we have open gym time for basketball with, with adults over at the middle school. Um, so I would consider it a program, just, uh, it's under our park and rec umbrella. I would do that.
How does the insurance work for that? Cause she had asked about the insurance.
I had asked her, because a lot of groups that use, like, are, the people that run the tennis program or other programs that, that are, um, done by vendors here in town, they have insurance. Obviously, this woman, they don't have the insurance. They're looking for open gym time. So it would fall under the town's insurance if they're using our gym.
And the insurance would support their badminton program, like that would?
If it's a program underneath our park and rec program, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, that's.
Does that sound like?
And they don't, they don't have, they don't have an instructor, you know what I'm saying?
Certified instructor.
Yeah, and, yeah, they have to have chaperones to.
That's the key thing. They can't just, the kids ages twelve to eighteen years old just can't show up there on their own. They have to have.
What would be the ratio of chaperones that you'd be looking for?
Well, if they have ten kids, I would wanna have two, for sure. I mean, camps was always one to ten, one staff versus the ten kids.
Yeah, but.
But we, 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 our ratios are higher than that. We would just have two to ten.
But you have to have two adults.
I would, um, definitely two adults.
Yeah.
And what about?
They somehow get like twenty kids or something down the road, I would want two or three tops.
She talked about ten as more of like a minimum, it sounded like.
Correct.
You know, hoping for more.
She's talking about four or a court at a time, right? So only eight can play.
Right, only two courts.
And you rotate.
Yeah.
So you can't have too many.
There was a dozen kids here.
Depends on how quick the games are.
Right. On our end for registration, we have to give, we're gonna have to take a certain amount of kids. We're gonna have to have a, a minimum and a max.
Right.
So I'll discuss that with her.
Yeah.
Based on registration, and once it's full, it's full.
And what about fees? What would you?
I'm gonna have to discuss that with her too. I don't, I'm not gonna charge, we're not gonna charge.
No, I know, but I don't know how you determine that.
But basically, our programs work here in town is you charge a certain amount. And then a percentage is given back to the recreation department for registration, use of the facility, so on and so forth, so. I'm gonna have to work that out with them. To get it started, I don't think we need to charge a lot. If they get a certain amount and, and numbers go high and gets bigger and they stay here for a while, then we can always adjust the price.
Yeah, and.
But to get it off the ground, I think we need to make it affordable and.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll see what kind of interest you get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there was a dozen kids here, I think.
Sure.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So they have an interest.
Yeah, it was a good showing.
Yeah. Alright, uh, all in favor of the motion? Alright, you may, you need to.
Perfect.
Alright.
And I'll discuss that. I'll talk with her tomorrow and we'll go from there and I'll report back to you guys. I can even email you if it's prior to the, uh, the meeting, or I'll give you a report at the February meeting.
Well, you're booked. When's, uh, when's your programs end?
Right now, we'll go, it's probably till, you know, end of January, February.
Yeah, you have basketball?
Yeah, basketball goes to the middle of March.
Yeah, so you, you're not, don't have.
We're lucky. We don't even have to use our, our gym for any practices. We use all the schools for, during the week, so.
That's good then.
Just play at, the, the young kids play there on Saturday mornings, into the early afternoon.
But I noticed you have events throughout the day.
Yeah, the schedule is tight.
Too.
Yes.
Zumba or something?
All that stuff, zumba, yoga, yeah, there's stuff going on.
Evenings, alright.
Yep.
I'm sure you'll hear from her tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. Alright.
They're anxious to get started.
She's persistent.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else to bring up?
How's Fred Wolf Park doing? Is it, uh, probably a big subject to bring up there?
They're meeting on that tomorrow.
It's on tomorrow, alright, so TBD.
You got a meeting tomorrow, Jack?
Yeah.
It's a public meeting, right?
No, no, I don't think it's a public meeting.
Because we went, uh, Allison, Chuck, Jim and I, well, Jim's on the committee. We went, uh, November, right?
It's a long time ago now, yeah.